All right, the public has entered the meeting.
Okay, and we have everyone else on. Good evening, everyone. At this time, I will call to order the regular town council meeting for June 1, 2020 is 7:09. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Will do. Councilman Gardner.
Present.
Councilman Kulturitis.
You are muted.
Present. Thank you.
Counselor Spoon.
Present.
Counselor Tulowitzki.
Present.
And President Mellon. All five council people are in attendance this evening.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would ask everyone to please join me in a moment of silence followed by the pledge allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
To the flag. To the United States of America.
To the United States of America. To the republic.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into the 45th Street construction update, I'm going to take this opportunity to read a statement. Last week, disturbing video quickly circulated and shocked our nation. We all watched in horror as George Floyd pleaded for help while enduring brutal and lethal treatment under police custody. The reprehensible acts inflicted upon George Floyd are inexcusable. This tragic event left one man dead, his family devastated, and millions of people crying for justice. These cries are belling in the form of protests throughout our country. Over the past couple of days, protesters have gathered in Munster peacefully. We want to acknowledge and thank those protesters for expressing themselves without conflict. We are aware of Munster citizens' concerns about inequity, and the Munster Town Council abhors racism in all its forms. We fully support the right to assemble and protest, and demonstrations and protest marches have a long and valued history in our country. However, we do condemn violence, looting, and the deliberate destruction of property. Before, before closing, we want to honor and thank our police officers for respecting the protesters who peacefully gathered in Munster. And we also want to thank Chief Shekel, the Munster Police Department, the Munster Fire Department, Munster Public Works, for everyone who worked, who have been working diligently and preparing to keep the town of Munster, its residents, and businesses safe. We know their lot is not always an easy one, and we appreciate their willingness to put their well-being on the line every day to protect our lives and property. Thank you.
Thanks, Liam.
You're welcome. At this time, I will. 45th Street construction update. Do we have Lee with us?
Yes, this is Lee Randall with the LZ. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Yes, we can.
All right, great. I'll start with the utilities. What's been ongoing, of course, has been on Camelia Drive between Southwood and Columbia. So there's been resurfacing work, things of that nature being done with the town of Munster in conjunction by Walsh and Kelly for the restoration along the south side, while that work has been done for the town on the north side. The paving, I believe, is expected to be completed this week, and then following that, then there'll be some landscaping restoration completed perhaps in the next week or two following that. Another utility is Sprint. They have completed their relocation within the CN Right-Away and the temporary poles that they installed last year on the north side of Old 45th there between Columbia and Southwood have been removed. So then Calumet Avenue, obviously, construction of the northbound lanes continues. With that, we have traffic restricted to one lane each direction, including a left-turn lane for northbound onto West 45th. Underground storm sewer work has been ongoing and is expected to be completed probably the end of this week. Also begun grading and removing unsuitable soil pockets between, I guess, north, I should say, north of 45th West and towards CN and just that section north near the Marathon Station. They've also begun installing subgrade treatment, which is the aggregate base beneath the pavement in that same section. Concrete curb and asphalt for the northbound lanes of Calumet are expected the middle of this month, and we are still hoping to switch traffic on Calumet to construct the southbound lanes around the Fourth of July. And 45th East for the underpass, forming and reinforcement continue. You may be able to see that picture there that was taken this morning. So they are still working primarily on the eastbound side. There are the two of four mats in place along with a number of stirrups. They also began installing some of the wall bar along that east wall or face. That is expected to continue. We have a tentative pole gate for that bottom slab portion the night of June 18th into the morning of June 19th. Retaining wall construction is expected to resume. There are more deliveries expected this week. Overtime for acceleration has continued. We're about an eight-week mark. I've got a projected cost so far of about $28,000 to date. We have worked four weekends of those eight weeks, including the prime contractor and two subcontractors. Probably currently about one week worth of gain on the acceleration, most recently due to weather. Holiday weekend, we had a large storm event there. So that will continue. We get to that, that poor date, that's kind of considered a milestone for us. We'll certainly be able to have a better judge there. In addition, there, the mock-up panels that are staged on 45th just east of Calumet near Centennial Village, staining of those mock-up panels is expected this week. So once that's completed, I'll certainly let you know if you would like to take a look at that and evaluate that color, and we can go from there on that. So at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions that you may have.
Counselors, do you have any questions for, for Lee?
Really quick, Randall, one of the consistent concerns we have from residents in this office is that maintenance of traffic on Calumet and the, particularly the southbound, understood that there is no room for a westbound turn lane in the current alignment of the maintenance of traffic. There's not enough space. Just for the record, in July, when we cut over to the other side and shift that maintenance of traffic, will there be a dedicated turn lane, or will it still be a through west?
I would have to verify that. I'm just trying to think off the top of my head. I'm not entirely sure. But based on the, the construction limits, I would like to say that we probably could fit in a right turn lane there. The problem with, you know, currently is that tight radius for making right turns, especially for trucks, and then also the left turn coming off of 45th, trying to prevent any, you know, damage to any motorist vehicles there. So I can cer- I'll certainly look into that and let you know.
It is a busy little corner, isn't it?
Pardon me?
It is a busy little corner.
It certainly is, certainly is. So I can't give you a a firm answer at this time. I don't really recall.
That's fine. And just as a fun fact, how much steel do you think is going to be in that underpass when it's all said and done? How many, how many tons?
There are 2 million pounds of reinforcing steel that are going into that underpass, as well as over 3,100 cubic yards of concrete.
And where is the steel from? Is it Indiana steel?
It's from Harris Rebar, which is in Bradley, Illinois. Close, not quite.
It's close. Lee, my question, you talked about the mock-up panels and how they'll be, they're being stained shortly. What part of the infrastructure is that going to make up?
That is.
Where will people see that when they're driving through?
Yeah, that's the architectural, that stone finish on the retaining walls. So there's, I think, three different colors, that they're making five different shades. Based on the contract documents, I think there was a, they called it like a fond black type staining color palette, if you will. So a lot of earth tones.
And are those best seen in person? Are you able to also send, take some pictures and send them around?
I can certainly take pictures and send those around, and you're more than welcome to come out there and take a look at those in person if you don't feel that that's, does it justice.
And are you looking, sorry, one last question on that. Are you looking for input on which is the favorite color, or?
Well, they're, they're going to try to represent what was included in the contract itself based on those color shades. So I think at this point, I don't, there's two panels there, whether or not at this point, once they show up, I'll find out if they're going to do different shading on that. And then we can select from there. If not, it would be kind of a yea or nay on perhaps the first one.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Dustin, for those who are newer on the council, when was that? We, we went through those materials and we chose the color. So if we have maybe something for reference that we can send.
We have the minutes from that study, that work study session, I think it was in 2016. I do have those minutes, and I can send those. Also, at that meeting, we discussed the, the appearance of the pump station that would be built that will house the generators or the drainage structures.
Right, so that way people will have a, the, all counselors will have a reference as to what, you know, it's been discussed and what, what we were looking for it to, to look like at the completion of the project.
And there's a color, I'm sorry, there's a color picture included in the contract document. So when I provide pictures, I'll also provide that page that you have that as reference, if you like.
All right, thank you, Lee.
You're welcome.
Counselors, do you have any other questions for Lee?
No.
No questions for me.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Lee. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
That brings us to public comment. Dustin, have you had any questions submitted to you from the public?
We have not.
All right. Thank you, and that takes us to the consent agenda.
I will accept the consent agenda as given.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. I show Councilman Kulturitis with the motion and seconded by Counselor Tulowitzki. Counselor Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Kulturitis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes? Counselor Spoon?
Yes.
How do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
Counselor Mellon?
Yes. Count. Yes.
Thank you. I show 5-2-0 passing or accepting the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, and we'll move on to old business. And first item up for review is ordinance 1797, the war of late fees.
Wendy? This is a, yep, it's a second reading. The ordinance is COVID-related, and it allows the Clerk Treasurers Office to waive late fees if residents request that in writing. It will be in effect from April 20th through the December billing period, which those bills are due January 20th, 2021.
I will adopt ordinance 1797 on second reading as presented.
Seconded by Chuck Gardner.
Or by Chuck. Give it to Chuck.
Yeah. Get my name in there somehow.
I show Councilman Kulturitis made the motion, and it was seconded by Councilman Gardner. Counselor Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. He votes yes. Counselor Kulturitis?
Yes.
He votes yes. Counselor Spoon?
Yes.
He votes yes. Counselor Tulowitzki?
Yes.
He votes yes. And President Mellon?
Yes.
She votes yes. 5-2-0, that passes.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item B, which is the contract proposal Impact.
The proposed contract for Impact. So when this last came before the council, there were two options. There was a, a true-up, which is basically, think of it in your, in your, in your mind, conceptualize it as a change order in scope. So it means that we asked Impact to manage devices that they didn't know that they would have to manage, or install servers that they did not anticipate having to add because it was our request, not their recommendation, things like that. And at the end of the year, they say, you know what, you know, we, we had an agreement to do this much work, but you had us do this much work, and this much work is going to be done forward, so let's true up this much right here. Or it was a proposed 60-month extension, and there was a little reluctance about the duration of that extension. So the feedback that council gave was fourfold, largely full, fourfold. One, there was some discomfort with the language in the proposed contract that was previously reviewed by you about auto-renewal. That language has been removed. There was a desire to have the venue changed from Illinois to Indiana for any kind of dispute and breach. That has been changed. There was a request for a better explanation of what a true-up is. I, I feel that that explanation is clear. And there was also a request for a 36-month option. That has been included as well. Mr. Westland?
There was a fifth item, Dustin, that dealt with limitation of liability on their part. So prior to this draft, they had a provision in that said if they screwed something up and through their negligence, like caused our entire system to go down, which caused a bunch of damages, they were limited in the amount of damages they would, they would have to pay us to the amount we've paid them for their contract. So before they revised it, if they did a million dollars worth of damages, and we had paid them $30,000 or $20,000, that's all they would be liable to pay us back. And they've removed that, and now it's the extent of their liability insurance, which at the time I had, I don't remember, it was either $500 or a million dollars. It was, it's a significant, you know, hopefully it never comes any of that, but that, that was the significant issue, along with the other four things that we've got straightened out.
Thank you. I'm sorry for omitting that. So on five points, they offered clarification and modification in their language. But what you have before you is still the, the old true-up. Or two options. One would be a 60-month with a, and that would be roughly $4,000 less per month. And one is a 36-month with a spend that would be, you know, less than what we have right now. Or, you know, number three is we would say we'll pay the true-up because that's work that's been done that we've asked them to do, and then we go out to bid later in the year. Certainly a reasonable thing to do. But I do think that Impact has done a phenomenal job for us, and they have at least earned the right to ask the question before council, what's your pleasure?
Dustin, if I remember right from last time, the, they were willing to waive the true-up with the 60-month agreement. Is, does that also stand for the 36-month agreement?
Yes.
Okay, so we're really looking at, we go into a three-year agreement with them, starting this October at, at the 15, 888, 81 a month. Or we go into a five-year agreement, and it'll drop down to 13, 172, 65. I calculated that at 2,700, roughly 2716 a month. That's 32, 32 and a half thousand a year, just to kind of give us a sense from what we're voting on, I guess. Is it worth the 64 grand over the period of two years in order to have the freedom to go out to bid without breaking a contract?
Dustin, how many years have we been with Impact?
It will be three years in October of 2020.
And we really haven't had any issues with them at all?
No.
Yeah. Finding an IT individual that you really trust and like to work with is, is golden in any type of business. So I think moving forward with the savings, I think the five-year one would make more sense to me. Just from my personal experience.
Within the contract, is there any kind of out clause if, or situation if we're not happy with the service, what kind of, what type of contract is this? Is there negotiations? Is there mediation or something along that line, or what, what does it? If after two years or three years, we're not happy with what, what's going on here?
I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head, Councilman Gardner. I can follow up with you if you'd like.
I think, yeah, I would think that'd be important if we are entering a three- or five-year contract, we would know if there's a a lower-quality service that we exhibited after the first two years, how we can adjudicate that.
That's a good point.
And are we certain that we enter into a contract now, the, the true-up is, is waived?
What do you mean, what? Do you mean that, so if we enter into the 36-month agreement, we would pay $15,888. That's, that's what it would be, that contract would be now. If we signed, if we elected to choose the 60-month contract, our spend would go from $17,115 to $13,172. And that would be, that, that contract would begin now. However, if we choose not to elect either of those options, we, we really must true up to the true cost of the menu of services that we have asked them to undertake beyond what we initially asked them to take. So perhaps that's, that's my fault for not articulating that. The true-up is what we would have to pay were we to not extend. So it's kind of a carrot or not a carrot. I don't want to call it a stick, because it's not really a penalty, it's payment for services rendered. But there is an incentive for extending that relationship. And that, that incentive is a lower cost, which is if you wanted to say they waive it, they waive it. But I think they just bake it into a different equation for the length of contract.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if that clarified or confused for me. So let me ask a clarifying question, if I might. The true-up agreement, if we don't take the 36 or the 60, is that our new monthly rate, the 20,638?
That is accurate.
Oh, okay. I thought it was just the 20,000 sort of gap of what they have already delivered, and that was an amount that we owed them.
Yeah, the delta between $17,115 and $20,638 is the extra services that they've been providing beyond the scope, which we had originally contracted with them. So at the end of each year, this is just how they do it. They don't ding you once they, they provide service throughout the entire year. And then they look back and they say, you know, honestly, we signed up to maintain this much. Between point A and point B, we took on this much. So this is, we're going to true up. We're going to, now and the next year, we're going to charge you the cost it actually costs to maintain the extra stuff that we are now maintaining for you.
I, Dustin, I think the question was, all right, the, I understand the true-up number, but right now, are we obligated to pay them that difference for the past year, I think was the question?
No.
No. So right now, if we actually started with these guys, if this person right now was a brand-new company, they're coming in, they're going to charge us 20 grand a year, 20 grand a month to actually take care of these services. This same company says, hey, if you want to discount me, we can go 36 months at this lower cost, or 60 months at this lower cost.
Yes.
Correct? That's where we're at right now. So I don't want to spend $20,000. It's just a matter of, you know,
Yeah.
Do, do we want to tie our hands for five years or three years? And that's the question that has to be asked, in my opinion.
Yeah.
And, you know, like I said, I, I don't have a problem with the five-year, as long as we've got a three-year track record without any issues with the company. But if you guys all feel more comfortable with three-year, I've got no problem with that either. I just don't want to stay at the $20,000.
Yeah.
And Dave. Go ahead, Steve, you go ahead.
No, just, you know, where we are with this year, a financial uncertainty, $32,000, 5, 32, 592, that's the savings if we go with the six months, that's real money for this year. So I'm, I'm aligned with, with, with Councilor Kulturitis on the sixth year, or sorry, on the 60-month.
And quite frankly, the only issue that I have is if, how do we, how do we work in year three or four if, if services aren't as good as we want them to be?
Well, do we actually have to make it to Chuck? I mean, doesn't do, I'm sorry, Chuck, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but doesn't do, actually have to make a decision tonight? Can we find that information before we make it? And, you know, put it on the agenda for the following. I agree with you, Chuck.
I think Dave was going to answer the question.
Oh, there he goes, he got it handled up.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I didn't review, it's been a little while since I reviewed the contract itself, and I have it up on my screen, my version of it. And I'm not finding it real fast, any, like, early out. Like, a lot of times in these contracts, you'll have, all right, if you send 60 days notice, you can get out at any time. I think Dr. Kulturitis was asking that a few minutes ago. And I didn't remember seeing that when I looked at this. I think it was last week. And I'm not finding that now. And if there is no provision for getting out early, like with some notice provision, then if, if in year four, you were going to say, hey, you know, or in year, mid-year three, you said, yeah, I'm, I'm done, you're going to wind up paying the whole term. So you know, typically, we don't like to go out five years, although I agree with what Steve and Dr. Kulturitis said, that that's a, that's a savings. It has to be waived, right? You're locking yourself in for five years with, and, you know, if I had some more time to look at it, I might be able to find a provision that allows for an early out, but right now, I'm not finding it. So I think you have to assume that you're locked for five years, and if you want out, you're going to pay your way out. And so then the question becomes, you know, is that savings that Steve just talked about, is it worth it knowing then that I'm locked for the five years?
The, the technology world is so fluid. We don't know what needs we're going to have five years from now. And if this company's the best one that can, you know, can, can work for us, or if somebody else will say, hey, we'll do this at half the cost. Because the technology will have made what they do so much easier, you know, we just don't know. So I'm leery about a five-year contract, but I, to me, the, just, one of the disadvantages of the three-year is that it, it doesn't make it. it, it doesn't make it, it, life is stable for them. If they've been doing a ju- good job, you know, have they earned the right to go to the five years? So I, I'm sort of torn. I could, I guess I could go either way.
And personally, I, I think I'd rather go to the five years if we could. Uh, I just like to make sure that, if we're not happy with their services, and again, it's not something that's a, a quick decision that we would make, because I, I think changing companies is a chart, you know, I, I'm not trying to find some way to, you know, just get, get a lower price and, you know, uh, cancel the service after three years. I just want to make sure that we are covered if they really are poor in their service in year three or four, if they have different ownership after three or four. If there's some way that we can say that we get out of it.
And we pay on a, we, payment terms are month by month, right?
I believe so.
So if they, I mean, if they were to go out of business or something in the meantime, then we, we go out to bid anyways. Now, I'm calculating, I think it's seventeen percent, um, price reduction with going for the, the five year plan. Seems like a smart deal for me. So I, I think I'm hearing that we'd like to go with the sixty month if we have clarification on, uh, on how, on what the exit clause is. I don't know what answer we need to hear from them to, to change our decision. You know, that's another question is wh- what, what, what do they, what could they say that would change our decision so we don't, you know, force our vendor to go back again for something that may not be really consequential?
The, the, the contract calls, sets, calls out that impact, we terminate the agreement or, or any supplement within ninety days written notice to the client. I'm sure if you wanted to wait another two weeks, I could uh, wrangle language that would say, uh, an analogous consideration for the town. Either party may terminate with ninety days notice. If that's, if that's the language that you want to see before you, uh, cast a vote, do that. The contract also says there's dispute resolution, or, uh, you can add a supplement to the agreement, uh, at a later date. So, uh, Chuck, to your point, if there's an event where there is, uh, something short of a breach, uh, which would be a, a severable, uh, event in the contract, we, we just no longer like the cut of their jib, but they're still doing the job. We can either negotiate for a supplement, or we could go to dispute resolution. Uh, if that's something that you'd like to consider, uh, in that scenario. So, uh, whatever your pleasure is, we'll take care of it. Dave?
You could, and if you look at the paragraph above the one you're kind of pointing to there Dustin, it says essentially non-cancelable by client, that's us, right? Upon execution by client, unless otherwise permitted in an applicable supplement. The supplement refers to the five items that Du- Dustin and kind of out, and I outlined earlier. So you could approve a, a five year, I personally would feel more comfortable, you know, recommending you approve a five year contract with, on the condition that analogous language to the, to what Dustin read, giving us a ninety day out is added to the supplement.
Sounds good to me.
I'm comfortable with that.
So we should just let Dustin talk to them and then put this back on for the next meeting?
Or, or approve it contingent upon Dustin getting that language added.
Yeah, that's, that's fine with me too. Yeah, definitely.
Cause I, I don't like to rely on, I mean, the way this is worded right now, Chuck, to your question, the only way you're out is if they breach, and the breach would have to be a material breach under, and it's the default paragraph. They'd have to, I mean, they'd have to stop giving services, almost to what Steve said, where they would almost have to go out of business or fail so badly to get us out of this thing. But with a ninety day col- provision in there, analogous like Dustin's talking about, well, now I can live with that, because if you get to year four and there's a personality conflict or whatever, you can agree to part ways in ninety days. It's fine.
Wendy, did you have something to say?
I do. I just want to clarify. We're still going to pay seventeen thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars until October. And then in November, the new rate starts.
I don't believe that's accurate. I believe once this contract begins, uh, the, the different rate begins.
Will, will, um, see immediate savings?
The effective date of the agreement, Wendy, I mean, I, we need to clarify this with them, but the effective date of the agreement was May fourth. I assume they're going to make the effective date, whatever day we approve it. So if you, the top of the first page, master services agreement effective date, that's what I would argue when we sign it. So if we approve it tonight and Dustin signs it tonight, I would argue June would be your first month at the lower rate.
Okay.
Are there any other comments or whatever else discussion?
Unfortunately, President Mellon is having technical difficulties, so I'm gonna, she just literally passed the gavel to me, so I'm going to need a motion to actually move forward with this from another councilman.
Then I would make a motion that we accept, uh, impact sixty day contract with the added clause.
Sixty month.
Sixty month. The sixty month contract, did I say sixty day? The sixty month contract, um, with the added clause in there that we can, uh, part ways, um, terminate the agreement within ninety days with notice, uh, to the, um, to impact.
Second?
Tulowitzki, a second?
Very good. I show.
Just, sorry, just one point of discussion still if we may.
Sure.
I would be prepared that there are some sort of, um, that, that they would say you can terminate with ninety days written notice under this set of conditions. Uh, otherwise we can come, you know, otherwise we can basically undo that, we, we can take the savings from them and then just write a note and be out in ninety days. So I don't imagine they would give that all, all up, but we're talking about a reasonable, like with cause.
Well, I, I don't know if you are, because they're not talking about with cause, and I think what you're talking about is that, a- and it was similar, they had an attorney fee provision, Steve, where they, they said, oh, if we get into court battle and then you have to pay our attorney's fees. And when I talked to Dan, um, our account guy, who was right across the hall from me actually, um, and he said, you know, what's the objection to this? And I said, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, right? Like, if you're going to get your fees, then we should get our fees and the winner should get their fee. And he goes, yeah, you're right. And then we talked about like the venue part, and I'm like, I'm not traveling to Lake Forest to file a case with you guys. And so he was real reasonable, and when I brought up the, hey, what's good for you is good for us. You know, he may not say ninety days, but he may turn, he may turn around and say, all right, how about a hundred and eighty days for both of us? Okay, fine, whatever it is for you, it should be for us. That's all.
Okay. Yeah, if we can get that, that's great.
And if you can, then we, you know, then we talk about it again in two weeks, because I don't think there's any, I mean, not that everyone's happy to keep talking about it, but.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, Wendy, roll call please.
Very good. I show that, uh, Councilman Gardner made the motion, and it was seconded by Counselor Tulowitzki. Counselor Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Kultritis, how do you vote?
I'm last to vote now, Wendy.
Okay, Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Tulowitzki, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Counselor Kultritis, how?
Yes, thank you. Yes. All right, there is nothing else on their old business that brings us to new business. First, under new business is the twenty twenty-one budget calendar.
Very exciting stuff, uh, the twenty twenty-one budget calendar. If you could please review it, and, uh, there's a couple of dates that are very important for the counselors. That would be September twenty-first and October third, fifth, uh, to be in attendance at the town council meeting, those two dates. There's a specific timeline that we need to follow, we need to publish, and then notify, have a public hearing. And, um, all of the dates are within the guidelines, the statutory deadlines. In fact, they're a little bit ahead. And that way it allows for any, uh, unexpected occurrences. So we're looking for you to approve the, uh, budget calendar as it's presented.
Righty.
I would make a motion that we accept the twenty twenty-one budget preparation schedule as presented.
I saw a second. I think that was Ken. Was that you, Ken?
Yeah, who was, but it doesn't have to be.
All right, I'm sorry, okay.
I show, are we going to have any discussion or anything?
I, I don't think so. You can go ahead, Wendy.
I do have a question. Um, this is not put in there. Are there, I, I'm sure there is potential for work studies. That's just up to the, the council to get together to, to talk about or discuss the different types of, uh, work studies we would like to have with regards to the budget for the upcoming year. Is that correct?
Yep. That would be outside, those are not state mandated. So we can do those anytime typically, and Tricia, correct me if I'm incorrect, but the, uh, budget season really starts in June, June, July is a big month, August. So that's when we'd really be pulling together most of our information in August.
Okay, thank you.
Once we have our six month totals, so.
And Wendy, the September twenty-first and October fifth dates, are those state mandated dates, or if there's uh, an issue, can we change that at a later date?
Um, the sooner we know that we can change them, um, the better. Um, there's, uh, once we put the notice in the paper for a public hearing, then we have ten days. Those, our local schedule is based on our, uh, town council meeting schedule. So if we know for certain someone's not going to be there, there's the risk that someone else isn't, and if we lose the quorum, then I understand in the past you've had to have a special meeting just to pass a budget because a quorum wasn't held, hit, available on one of the nights of pass, passage. So we're just trying to avoid that in advance if possible.
Okay, I will just double check and reserve those, those dates.
Thank you.
If there's an issue, but.
We appreciate it.
Oh, I did notice, and I think the last line says town council final adoption of FY twenty twenty budget.
Yes.
I think that should be, yeah, twenty-one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Wendy.
Very good. I show Councilman Gardner made, um, that to approve it, it was seconded by Council. Counselor Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Counselor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, Counselor Tulowitzki, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Councilman Kultritis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Very good. So we're four to zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, next under new business is three one three tap room, approval of conditional use permit for outdoor dining area.
Thank you. We have a special guest star for these next two items, uh, Town Planner Tom Vanderwood.
All right, special guest star, Tom, that's all yours.
Thank you, and thank you for that introduction. This memo that I provided to you is a request to approve a conditional use permit, uh, for the three one three tap room, which is located at three one three Ridge Road, so that they can operate, um, an outdoor dining area. So they, as you may recall, they opened up in November of twenty nineteen. And at that time, when they opened up, they constructed a patio, which they intended to use, um, as a ancillary dining area. Um, they didn't open it up because they were kind of waiting to see what the new zorn, zoning ordinance would say about, um, dining, outdoor dining. Um, so when they decided, when spring started rolling around, um, they contacted us and we informed them that yes, it's still a conditional use or a special use, that are the same thing. Um, and that requires approval by, um, the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Town Council. So they presented their plans to the Board of Zoning Appeals in, uh, May, earlier this year, or earlier this month, rather. And, um, after hearing the presentation, the BZA voted unanimously, uh, to approve, or rather to forward a favorable recommendation to the Town Council to approve their patio. So, uh, we looked at a couple different, um, aspects of it to ensure that it was going to, um, not cause a disturbance to the neighbors. And it was, it would be a safe, um, situation. I've included the staff report from the Board of Zoning Appeals in your packet. Um, but just very briefly, I'll state that it's located to the east of the building. Um, it's not close to any residential area in the sense that, um, you know, there won't be a noise impact to the neighbors. Um, it's located next to the gas station there, in between the tap room and the gas station. Um, and it's located far enough away from Ridge Road so that it doesn't pose any, uh, risk to customers from, uh, vehicles coming off the road. And it's also, uh, proposed to be fenced in, um, so that, you know, minors can't just wander in and have a beer. But it does have an emergency gate in the back in case there's an emergency, so people can, um, leave safely. The only access to the patio will be through the building itself, so they will be able to screen all customers. And, um, having said that, we, the BZA did have one condition, which was to, um, they're recommending that they complete their landscaping plan prior to opening the patio. So the recommendation from the Board of Zoning Appeals is to approve this special use permit and allow them to open up their patio upon that condition.
What's the capacity, the, the per, the person capacity of the outdoor area? Twenty-five people?
Uh, that's a good question. It's actually fairly small. There are just a few, I don't know the actual capacity, but there are a few picnic tables out there, so it's not a, it's not a very large.
I didn't know if, if it has, if it's increasing the number of people that can, that the restaurant can serve at one time, does that require additional parking? And I, I know parking was a concern.
Potentially, it could, it could require one or two extra spaces, but, um, they have sufficient onsite parking to accommodate all of their customers in their build, that would be in the building, um, through a shared parking agreement with, uh, their neighbor. And there are overflow parking spaces on street, so we do permit a certain number of on-street parking spaces to count, towards an overall parking count for a building or for a use.
I would move that we approve the conditional use permit for an outdoor dining area in a CD four dot A district in order to operate an outdoor dining patio at three one three tap room, three one three Ridge Road.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, further discussion?
How, what is the length, what is the length of a conditional use permit? Is it for, as long as they're operating that business, Tom?
Yeah, as long as they're operating it according to the, um, what they've represented. So if they were to expand the use of it, it would terminate the conditional use if they were to cease using it and then try to restart it. But as long as it's, it's being operated the way it was represented to the Board of Zoning Appeals, then it would continue in perpetuity.
Thank you.
Tom, I know there was discussion about the, uh, quote unquote dilapidated screening fence. I- is that part of, is that part of the, um, the landscaping agreement, the contingents, contingent approval?
That was a point of discussion at the Board of Zoning Appeals. Uh, the staff recommendation at that time was to require that they, find a way to fix that fence. Um, however, the Board of Zoning Appeals did not, uh, attach that condition to their recommendation.
Then we.
That's only because they don't own the fence, Chuck.
Yeah, and that's right. The, the feeling was because they don't own the fence, they didn't think that it would be, they didn't think that it would be appropriate or just to require them to modify it in some way.
So it was left more as like a gentleman's agreement with the owner of the property for the fence within, within 12 months to see if they could fix it, is that accurate memory?
My gut feeling is that.
Go ahead.
No, my gut feeling is that if, you know, the taproom starts, you know, getting busier, they're not going to leave the fence looking like that. I mean, no one's going to want to sit out there and actually look at something that looks that dilapidated. So at some point, someone's going to address that issue back there. That's just my feeling.
Yeah, and the way I recorded it was that although it was a recommendation from the board, it was not included as part of their, as part of their motion.
For what it's worth, I drove by there with my kids who are six and eight, and they thought it looked pretty, the fence.
It's got a lot of character.
I have no further discussion on this.
Anyone else?
I have a question. The motion that was made did not actually include the condition of the landscaping. Are you wanting that in there?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I will, yeah, I just read the top part, I didn't read the bottom part. So yes, we want the landscaping in there.
Okay, thank you.
Um, where are the minutes from the BZA? Are they?
They are still in draft form, they haven't been approved by the board yet.
Okay.
They would be approved by the board at the June 9th meeting.
Thank you. All right, so we have, if we have no further discussion, we have a motion and a second. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. I show Councilman Gardner made the motion and it was seconded by Councillor Tulawitsky. Councillor Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Councillor Kulturitis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Yes. And then Councillor Mellon?
Yes.
All right, I show that passing five to zero.
Right. On to, we have, we have a memorandum of understanding with Centennial Village. Did you want to talk to this, Dustin?
This is something that's been ongoing for a number of years. So we had completed the construction of North Centennial Drive. That it's owned by the town of Munster and serves as an entrance to both Centennial Park and the development. But there was a gray area that was inadvertently created. Who would maintain what elements of that? Because the road does serve both a public and a private purpose. So we've been going back and forth with the developer for a very long time. And what you have here before you consider is a good faith agreement between where the, practically, and I'm talking, you know, street maintenance and the parks, and the developer, the property maintainer, think makes sense. Certainly, if you can see some other stuff in here, your feedback, of course, will be incorporated. But this is what makes sense at a boots-on-the-ground level. So the attached agreement attempts to do the following. It formalizes the operation and maintenance responsibilities for the portion of North Centennial Drive located on town property. So Centennial Village will continue to operate the irrigation system and be responsible for the streetlight system until the opening of North Centennial Drive 45th or the completion of Centennial Village. So that'll change over. And the reason for the irrigation is the irrigation is actually tied in, it's tied into the developers now, isn't it, Tom?
Yes.
Right, so it, it's a situation where, you know, there are overlapping responsibilities, just practical, physical, literal responsibilities over public and private property. So this kind of disambiguates some of those, no, you do it, no, you do it. There's a cost share for a light pole that was damaged a while ago. The redesign and reconstruction of the roundabout to prevent future damage. So if you've gone back there to, say, Cattaro or Harvest Room, coming from the north, so you have to do the roundabout, it is not uncommon for delivery trucks to get lost. And when they get lost, they make a mess. In fact, I followed one that accidentally took a wrong turn there and I followed them all the way to Three Floyds because they were delivering pops. So it's, you know, inadvertent, but the way it's designed, that roundabout, best-laid plans did not anticipate lost trucks. So it has to be redesigned. Is that at the end of the world? It's, it's a doable thing. But both parties are saying, no, you do it, no, you do it. Well, it probably makes sense that we both collaborate since it's the, kind of the voucher of the public and the private section of that road. And I think that's, that's fairly reasonable. And it sets a timetable for the formal acceptance of the road infrastructure by the town. So then it will be ours, that those streetlights will be ours. But we don't want to accept a set of infrastructure that's broken. So we would like to have it fixed and have the developer pay for a portion of it. So that's what you have before you.
And it proposes a 50-50 split in cost?
For the broken light pole and the redesign, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I move we approve and execute the attached agreement with Centennial Village LLC concerning operations and maintenance of the North Centennial Drive.
Second, that motion.
Second.
Did I hear two seconds for that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Tie goes to the gardener.
Yes.
All right, so we have, we have a motion and a second. Are there any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Certainly. I hear, I heard Councilman Kulturitis made the motion, it was seconded by Councilman Gardner. Councillor Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Kulturitis, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Schoon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Councillor Tulawitsky, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. And President Mellon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Yes. I show the maintenance agreement has been accepted, five to zero.
Thank you. That brings us to reports, am I correct? I'm, I've lost my, the agenda here, okay.
President Mellon, may I make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciated the, the statement that was read at the top of, of the meeting. And I want to address that it's, that this is a, that there's a lot of activity and attention all across the country and, and in our town. And I expect that we'll continue to talk about work through and have some time for work studies to figure out how is the town want to continue to monitor and prepare for dealing with this situation. There's so much unprecedented, unplanned from coronavirus to the rains and floods. And now the civil unrest. I just wanted to make sure that, I guess the public knew that we were, that we're coordinating and talking about that.
Definitely. Yep, we definitely will continue to communicate as we have been doing and working with our police. And thank you. All right, and let's see, oh, Wendy, I almost forgot, you have a census update.
I do have a census update. The town of Munster is number seven in the state of Indiana for the high percentage of people that have actively participated. Our neighbors to the south, St. John, continues to be number one with 83%, 85% of their residents completing the forms. Dyer is in fifth place in the state with 82%. And I don't know if I said, but the town of Munster is at 80.6%. 72% of our residents have completed it on the internet and the remaining percentage has been done with alternate methods, which would be mail or telephone. If you have trouble doing the census, check your browser. You may need to change to a different browser if you'd like to do it on the internet. And our final number in 2010 was 83.4% of our residents completed. So we're close to that number, but I would be hopeful that we could surpass it in the upcoming weeks. I have, Officer Greyst is including information about the census in his weekly crime watch report that goes to the neighborhoods. So we just want to keep getting that information out.
Thank you, Wendy, and I know we had a conversation a few days ago about adding a message onto our parks for, park boards. Have we been able to do that yet, Dustin? Or to reach out to the schools about seeing if we might be able to use their boards for, for a little bit of time?
We have not done that, had that done yet, but we will.
Okay.
Reach out to the schools.
Okay, great.
Based, based on the information that I can see, the west side of town, from the north to the south, they are running behind the east side of town. So if we have some choices in where to put signage, I would shift our focus a little bit to the west.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Other reports, just announcements, or no other reports? And we have announcement that the next regular scheduled town council and redevelopment, development commission meeting is June 15th, followed by the next regular council meeting, which would be July 6th. And that brings us to adjournment.
Where will the June 15th meeting be? Are we going to be online again?
Um, that is to be determined. I would, right, Dustin?
Yeah, the governor's back on track. There, there is a pathway to have this in person on the 14th. But that is to be determined based on where he places Lake County in the back-on-track schedule. For example, we were dinged a week for our, our health. So if we get dinged a week again, perhaps we'll be zooming once more. If not, then there will be an opportunity to have that meeting in person.
So we'll keep everyone posted.
I haven't seen anything in any additional executive orders that would preclude a council member from attending via Zoom while others are electing to attend in person. But all that's to be determined. Mr. Westland, you have your hand?
Yeah, I was just going to agree with you. The, the executive orders thus far have not mentioned, so the first executive order, the fifth one, well, the first one regarding the pandemic is what allowed for the virtual meetings. There has not been an executive order since then that has said you can't do a virtual meeting. So presumably somewhere around stage five, which will either be July 4th or 11th, if we stay on track, the governor, you know, is going to say at some point, you know, I want you to go back to in-person meetings. But I think Dustin's right, July or June, the June 14th date for us is probably going to be June 21st. So your second meeting will clearly fall within the virtual. If July 4th turns into, into July 11th for us, your first meeting in July may be virtual. And then it may be at your option for that, but it does remain to be seen.
Okay, so it sounds like there is a strong possibility that we'll still be zooming on the 15th. But we will keep everyone, including the public, up to, you know, up to speed and, and make that announcement so that everyone can join properly. Right, that brings us to adjournment. What's your pleasure?
So move.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Can we clarify who seconded that? I have Dr. Andy was, made the motion.
I think it was Councillor Tulawitsky with a
Okay, thank you.
Very subtle second.
Okay.
You don't want to leave. Why it was subtle?
Well, don't worry, you don't get to. He's, now we have a redevelopment, we're going to move directly into redevelopment. So it is now 8:14 and I will call to order the redevelopment commission regular meeting for June 1st, 2020. Wendy, can you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Gardner?
Present.
Present. Commissioner Kulturitis?
Present.
Commissioner Schoon?
Present.
Schoon is present. Commissioner Tulawitsky?
Present.
And thank you, and President, Commissioner Mellon?
Yeah, present.
We have five present. I also saw, it was John Castro is also in attendance.
I am.
Believe that I saw him on the list at one point. There he is, okay.
I'm here, thank you.
I see him, or see your name on the list. Very good.
Don, welcome.
Thank you very much.
So do we have, Dustin, did we receive any public comments for the redevelopment commission?
We did not.
All right, that'll move us to the consent agenda.
I move that we suspend the rules and waive the readings for the consent agenda and approve the consent agenda.
Second, Tulawitsky.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, Wendy, can you please call for the vote?
Very good. I show that Commissioner Gardner made the motion, it was seconded by Commissioner Tulawitsky. Commissioner Gardner, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you, yes. Councillor Kulturitis, how do you vote? Yes, Councillor Schoon?
Yes.
Votes, yes. Councillor Tulawitsky?
Yes.
Thank you. And Commissioner Mellon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Five commissioner votes to zero.
Thank you. We have no old business, new business, reports or announcements. That brings us to adjournment.
So moved. I second Mr. Tulawitsky motioned and I seconded.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.
All right. Dustin, are you going to send us another link for the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Right, see you soon.